But it kind of sounds like council is sort of in agreement on this one that maybe we want to look at a different building.
Feasibility study, excuse me.
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
Um, maybe do that feasibility study so we can see how much it would cost. I I really think we could do an amazing design. That would still give homage to the history of the community with and then give us much more room on that plot of land that we have there. It might be, I just see all kinds of possibilities and like Ms. Kennard said, you know, she's already got a process in place for storage of the artifacts that are in there. So we're we're near near, all we need is a feasibility and what we can do next. I think that I I really think we need to do this to preserve our history.
No, I think it wouldn't hurt to talk to members of the community and are going out and about and getting um. Getting opinions from them as well, you know, how do they feel about this? There are some people who have very strong feelings in favor of this old building because it means a lot to them. It's been there their whole lives. They may have volunteered. Over the years, um, other people may want to see that thing just fall over. I don't have any idea with the community in general because it's not something I bring up to them. So um, maybe just get some get some feedback from community members on this one as well.
Okay.
Further comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Ray. All right, the next item on this agenda is item C, South Hill Irrigation Improvement, HLA Task Order, Approve a Resolution Authorizing the Interim City Manager to Sign a Task Order with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying. To complete contract documents for the South Hill Park Irrigation Improvements Project. Mr. Manager.
I'll turn this over to Ms. Ray again.
Ms. Ray.
Council, City Manager, Public Works Director, thanks again. So this was another project that we were tasked with uh, kind of late last year. Previous council and previous city manager about looking at uh, operations at South Hill Park and trying to find a way to make them more efficient. So uh, this this task order is two parts. Uh, the main part of it is centered around irrigation, so irrigating the actual park out there. So currently irrigation is being fed from domestic water. So the city is is paying close to. Uh, depending on what number you'd like to use on the on the hottest part of the month, uh, the water bill is nine thousand seven hundred dollars. And so that equates to about fifty-five to fifty-eight thousand dollars a year that the city is spending on irrigation water using the potable system. Uh, so late last year, we reached out to SVID, uh, city staff uh, to look at the options for irrigation used through SVID. And a um, there is a point of delivery near the park that was evaluated and uh, we. I I I don't want to put too much sticker shock on you, but currently SVID, uh, through SVID, we're looking about a water bill of around thirty-five hundred dollars a year compared to fifty-five thousand dollars a year. So to get there, um, the the main line coming into the park, it's about over four feet deep, which is excessive for an irrigation system. Uh, city staff to work on it. Um, you know, they have to follow LNI procedures. It's trenching and shoring uh, to actually even get in the trench. So what we want to do is connect to the SVID system, put in a new main line around two and a half feet deep and connect all the laterals. And uh, the most costly costly point of this project is the actual operating pressure. So you know, city operating pressure is about eighty PSI. SVID operates around thirty to forty PSI. So what that's going to force us to do to maintain the existing system is put in a like a booster pump. To be able to pump that pressure up so you can utilize the the main irrigation runs. So in uh, kind of rehabbing then the irrigation system to save money. Previous direction to us was to look at um, parking uh, parking layouts throughout the South Hill Park that would allow for about two hundred spaces of overflow parking. So with us getting there to look at all the irrigation runs and putting in new maybe backbone irrigation system, we want to plan for those improvements around the anticipated park improvements. So the second part of this would be to design those parking lots uh, that was anticipated um, and and again only for overflow parking. So the the previous thought was if there was a big event at the community center, these parking lots could be put in use. But then otherwise they'd mainly be just be chained off, you know, until that high high use need was needed. So this this task order then allows us to get the design going for for both of those elements, both the irrigation and the parking lots.
Questions for Ms. Ray?
Um, Mr. Mayor, as as we know, whenever we do have a big uh, event out there, even with the Easter egg hunt, it was just a few months ago. I mean, there was parking over in the the park, the uh, land across the street where the uh, nursery used to be. Um, so and that's not really convenient or or and or safe. So the idea of. The identifying areas where we could have overflow parking, I think would be is is a really good idea. I think using the SVID water uh, to uh. I go from, what was that number, fifty-eight thousand to thirty-five thousand? I think that's kind of a no brainer.
Is what she said.
Thirty-five hundred, three thousand five hundred?
Three thousand five hundred. It's um, so.
Okay, I'm I'm in.
They will assess our, oh, and we don't have a cost from them yet. We're basing our costs on Sunnyview Park, which is currently with irrigation. Uh, they're assessing about a hundred and thirty-seven dollars an acre per year. And uh, South Hill Park is around seventeen acres. So that's how we come up with that number.
Ms. Ripley.
Did you see how much that was going to cost to uh, put in the irrigation lines and stuff?
So with the task order that we would do is the design work to try to get there. Um, you know, we've we're putting in another irrigation station uh, south of eighty-two for the port. Um, that that irrigation station is running about uh, fifteen thousand just on its own and then you would have the piping. Uh, so I I I can give you kind of a ballpark that should be less than a hundred thousand, but I can't get the actual number until we get designed. And then it depends if you guys want to do gravel on the parking lots in the meantime with that project. Thanks.
Further questions?
So what exactly is going to um, cover or the sixty thousand dollars going to cover?
It would be our design piece to get the irrigation uh, system uh, designed, uh, which would include all the coordination with SVID. Um, trying to figure out where the irrigation lines currently are, kind of liken it to your home system and you go, oh yeah, I think that line was here about five feet over and. So it's going to be a lot of piecing together um, what's happened over the years. Uh, and then uh, for the gravel parking lots, um, right now just gravel, but we do have to plan for storm drainage system. And that storm drainage system would get shared with some of the swells that have been put in for the community center over the years. So the the end product would be um, a a set of engineering drawings stamped by me uh, that would be ready for a public bid. And construction cost estimate for planning.
Further questions? Mr. Gavon.
If I remember correctly, um, Mr. Martin once mentioned to me, we cannot have gravel parking due to SM SMC.
You can only have it as an interim basis, um, not long term. So if you were looking to do something on a weekend or something along those lines, it would be just considered more event parking. Not too undifferent than some of the events that have happened, you know, around in the city over the past years, just for um, you know, just a one or two uh, event. Long-term parking, no, we can't. Um, it violates actually more of the Department of Ecology Manual for stormwater.
And uh, what 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 the purpose then would be, we still, we use the same sprinklers, the same piping, we just kind of disconnect from the from the water, from the city water. And connect the SVID.
Yeah, so the location, um, so the the delivery point is going to be more on the northeastern side of the park. Uh, as opposed to where the main line is right now. So we were looking to um, put in a new main line, maybe behind the tennis courts and connect into then the the distribution system. But what we need to look at is where all the, there's several zones out there for the sprinklers. Um, and any of those sprinklers, that would be around a parking lot. If it's said not to put the parking lot in, then we can keep them. Otherwise, we need to. Cut in some isolation valves so that you can disconnect certain parts of the irrigation system from, you know, that would be underneath the parking lot.
Further questions?
One more.
Hi, Mr. Gavon.
And the money, it's 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 not budgeted, it'd be coming out of the general fund?
Yep. Yeah, there is very sources available. Uh, RCO is really about the only um, one at the moment. Or and it really depends on the RCO part of money, you know, they're usually offered every two years. A application was submitted this year under the athletic facility for pump track. Um, but in considering RCO money, you know, it, the more soccer improvements, I think was identified as a priority for the city. So that should probably be uh, your RCO applications for soccer. This would be more considered um, uh, much more in line with like a maintenance.
But but um, excuse me.
Ms. Hart.
Um, but there is money available for for maintenance in that regard.
Uh, not through RCO at the moment. Um, the city has a current maintenance grant right now that's going to be closed for the pool improvements. So um, we hope that it will come back next year. Uh, we don't know. Uh, this year was the first year it was offered.
So so then and then we would be looking in maybe some other direction for some other monies in some other places perhaps?
We can certainly look down that path. Um, at at the moment, there isn't anything open.
Okay.
So this would follow more on under the general fund. Uh, the timing for this work, um, you know, with SVID shutting off uh, October fifteenth. And then coming back on mid-April is that we had hoped that a lot of this work would happen over the winter. Uh, just to um, not have to deal with SVID having live lines and be able to make all those connections that we need. So we do have a little bit of um, I I guess sensitivity for time. That uh, you know, if we don't necessarily hit those dates, it's not the worst situation, but it would probably put us into next year sometime.
Still, it is a is a project that we do need to do out there.
Well, it sounds to me like it's a project that will pay for itself rather quickly. I mean, we're still going to have a sizable water bill over at the community center. We do have the the park, the splash pad thing there that's going to use up water because that's never going to go on irrigation water. Um, and the other facilities will still be using water. We'll have the added electric bill for for a booster pump. But it's still not going to be equivalent to what we're paying per month.
Yeah.
For irrigation waters or for city water to to irrigate there. So I think I like the sound of the project. I like the, I like the idea. We definitely need parking. Um, having it able to be gravelled until it becomes main parking or we add it to the main parking, I think is is a good idea. Um, but yeah, being able to rope that off and say, yeah, you can't park here right now, um, is probably a good idea. So I I like this project. Um, we have talked for years about improvements to the community center and additions to the community center and things that need to be changed, and this is a move in the right direction as far as I'm concerned. Um, that's a facility that needs updating and needs expansion so that we can use it better than we are using it now. So.
And um, Councilmember Hart, we'll continue to look for funding programs, uh, you know, this year and and mainly to try to get to construction. Uh, you know, once we have a more detailed construction cost estimate, that really leverages us a bit to try to go find money.
Exactly. Yeah, that that stands for reason.
Further questions or comments for Ms. Ray? All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next one. Item D, Fee Schedule Update, Approve a Resolution Amending the Schedule of Fees and Charges for 2024. Mr. Manager.
Ms. Horner.
Ms. Horner.
Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Um, this is a quick update to encompass the three new permits that we approved at the last meeting. So the accessory use, the zoning permit for the chickens and rabbits, the fireworks display permit and the yard sale permit. Um, there was one other thing we discovered that we had neglected to put a. A recreational use pool rental fee in there consistent with what we did for the community center. So we also added that. And I think that's it.
And.
Ms. Hart.
I'm just, oh, you're just, I'm just looking to see what those pri- what the costs are going to be and I see you have those schedules right there. I was just looking for them here. Scrolling down a little further, sorry about that.
Questions or comments for Ms. Horner? Ms. Vasquez.
What are these prices compared to other cities right near us?
Um, I, you know what? I didn't do the work on that. I just took what uh, Mr. Martin had sort of prepared, so I don't have that answer for you. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Um, one other thing just to keep in mind, because the accessory use for the chickens and rabbits is how we passed it as a zoning change. Um, the permit would cost, would cover not per animal, but per property usage. So they just pay the twenty dollars. Have their site plan approved through the building department and then they can have up to the three chickens. So it's not a per chicken fee, if you will.
That's nice.
But it does involve so some sort of an inspection of how these animals are going to be housed.
Correct, and consistent with the um, the ordinance that was passed, uh, Cory and I worked together. Cory, I don't know if you guys have met Cory Taylor. He's the acting uh, Trevor Martin. What's your title? I can't remember. Anyway, um. We worked on looking through that ordinance and figuring out what the requirements were and making sure that we are going to get those into the application process. And he actually already developed the application to go online. Once you guys approve these fees, they should be up and running so people can start applying.
Perfect. Ms. Ripley.
Is the code enforcement going to be able to keep up with all the? All the extra work?
We haven't determined yet necessarily if it will be code enforcement or animal control, following up on like loose chicken issues as we come to them. For the time being, it's, it is going through the building department to approve the site plans. So. If there were issues, it may be through code enforcement, but in reality, I I don't know yet. We haven't figured that out a hundred percent, so.
And the people who have chickens now, are they going to be grandfathered in?
Um, no, they're going to have to get the permit for accessory use on their property, just like everybody else. So. Yeah, there's not a, and and especially since it's not a permit for the animal, it's an accessory use for the property.
Okay, Ms. Frausto.
Um, now that we have the updated um, fees, are we going to do some marketing around this? So people who already have chickens know that they have to come forward to uh, get a permit and I know the fees for like animal or dog registration.
I was going to post it on social media once um, the permit and the fees are already in place. I don't know if they're live. I know you said you created them. Are they live yet?
Not until we've passed this.
Okay.
And then he's going to push them out.
We are. So once everything is done, then I would, I'll post it. I didn't want to do it before.
Sure, yeah, no, that makes sense. But we are, we're we're gearing towards that. Okay.
But I would also suggest that once we decide who's going to enforce it, whether it be animal control or code enforcement, that they uh. Be proactive and go after those that are already there so that they can uh, know without excuse that they do need to have those permits.
Yeah, and I know that the, well, I think, I don't know, Rob can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the police department sometimes gets called on loose chickens. But there is not a whole lot that they can do to to do that. So I'm not sure that code enforcement has actually had much interaction with chicken households. So it might be us figuring out where they're at and so it might take a little while, but.
Okay.
I don't know sure where we're going to house loose chickens that we find, but.
Right, I don't, I can catch them, so that is.
I have ideas, but I'm not going to show.
I have, I have chicken dinner ideas, but that's not really very nice.
I saw a hand up over here, Ms. Vasquez.
So I see yard sale permit, I see the fee and then I see the violation fee as well beneath. And then for fireworks, I see the violation fee as well. But then when we go into the pets for the rabbits and hens, there, I don't see no violation fees. Is that going to be placed?
The the violation fees for the fireworks and the yard sales were already in place as code enforcement fees. I don't believe that we have a fee in place for zoning violations right now, but that would be a great question for. Mr. Taylor. Oh, we do. Okay, so we probably just need to pull them, figure out what they are, pull them out of the code and and get them added.
Okay, so we would, yeah.
They weren't in there.
That way we know what what violation fee would, they would be facing if they don't get these permits in place.
Okay.
Further questions or comments on this item? All right, let's move on to the next one. Revolving Loan Fund Allocation Increase, Approve a Resolution Re- to reallocate fifteen thousand dollars in the Development Fund to Additional Revolving Loan Funds. Mr. City Manager.
I'm not sure if this is Mr. Taylor or Ms. Horner. Ms. Horner, raise your hand, so.
I'll take it, yes. So um, I'm going to take over the uh, revolving loan fund issue uh, project since Trevor left. But um, right now the council has approved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which um, we've already awarded for uh, for awards. And so there's three more applications and that puts us at a total request amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So in lieu of of declining to fund them, the Community and Economic uh, Development. Commission has requested that we um, see if we can increase that amount by fifteen thousand dollars. And so since the money is already in the development fund and we have those funds in the abatement program right now. We could just transition fifteen thousand dollars from what our total abatement amount is into um, these loan funds if if the council so chooses. Um, and we, just as a reminder, we are going to probably relook at our ARPA funds as we get halfway through the year. Um, to figure out, make sure that we can get everything obligated um, by the end of the year. So we may have to review some of those abatement fees anyways that have been unspent to this point.
Questions or comments on this item? Ms. Gavon.
Have we considered maybe reducing five thousand dollars from each of the applicants?
I can I, I can I speak to that, Ms. Horner?
Ms. Hart, if you want to.
Um, actually, what we did, what the commission has done, has gone back through the the ones that have already been approved by council, those we can't, we can't go on. The ones that they're they're coming up for approval by the council, we have already taken, reduced the amount of money in the funds. So they um, the amount of money each one was going to get, we've already examined that particular issue because we knew we didn't have enough money. Um, for for future ones. So those those last three that you see that have not been approved yet, those were already scraped to as much as we could and still be viable viable for them. Without without the fifteen thousand.
But you don't have a Plan B? So say we don't approve it today, there's no Plan B to reduce it another five thousand?
Uh, I think not.
I believe, well, according to what the planner told me, I believe that they're prioritized. And so the the last one on that list there would would not be funded because of when the the applications were received and the other um, stipulations with the applications, so.
There is that, yes.
Got you. Thank you. Further questions?
Yeah, so I do see that Taylor's Bonvino's, the special have not been awarded yet. Do you know if this will be scheduled in soon?
Well, that's the ones that were were, they, they're ready to come to council, but until council determined if you wanted to increase the funds, they want to, they, we don't want to send people to council that you're going to. That we run out of money for and you're going to have to tell them no anyways. So um, unless council increases it, we'll only bring the the two applications to council instead of all three.
And that was sort of the recommendation also of of the commission to to bring it forward.
Okay.
So what's being said here, it sounds like is in order to award all three of these, the funds that has been decided on and not not exactly what they asked for, but what the commission has said, okay, we can do this. We will have to increase our amount to uh, by another fifteen thousand dollars or the last one on the list will not get their award. Correct?
My understanding that is correct.
Okay.
In accordance with what the commission wanted.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wh- where would we be pulling this, these additional fifteen thousand dollars from what ARPA?
Already in the abatement, it's in the development fund already. So you gave two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for these uh, revolving loans. And two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the abatement funds. And so right now, those abatement funds, there's still a quite a bit of it that has not been used at this point. And so we would just be transitioning fifteen thousand dollars from abatement funds to um, the loan, the revolving loan funds.
Ms. Ripley.
And how much is in the abatement funds?
Just a second.
And how much is used?
Just a second.
And, no.
One more time here.
But it's all coming from ARPA funds, which means it makes it a permissible transfer.
And it's all within the same fund, so it's, you have to pull it out of one fund and put it into another. So just a second here, let's see. So as of the last report, which was the beginning of May, um, the, let's see. The abatement funds still had like, well, two hundred and eight thou- almost two hundred and nine thousand dollars unspent. Okay, so. Of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was allocated, only forty-one or so has been spent.
Okay.
Ms. Vasquez.
Yeah, so I've actually been to these meetings. I've been very active there with them and I was able to hear all the interviewers and every single owner come in and kind of explain the reasons why they need this money. And so I'm curious to know if it, is there a possibility for them to come in and introduce themselves and kind of explain why they need this money? More more so for the reason that I know why, and I know that a lot of council members do not, and it'd be really good for us all to kind of. Get some more intel on why they need this money and maybe if, before accepting or approving these fifteen thousand dollars, kind of seeing if there is a possibility for us to modify the amounts that they are requesting.
Um, I, we're, I can do that if that's what council would like to do. We could table this for this, we could table this resolution for this evening and move it to the next meeting. And you could, so you could, we could put this after you guys review the applications if you wanted or something like that. I don't know. And then you can make a decision at that point. You just can't approve, well, I guess you can do whatever you want, whether or not you're, you know what I mean? You really can't approve that extra fifteen thousand dollars. For that loan unless you've increased the allocation. But as long as you've increased the allocation before we actually pay it out, it's probably fine.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hart.
It seems to me that we have had in the past, the different uh, applicants come before us and explain what the money was going to be used for. And I think that's been standard practice, has it not?
Yes, in this situation, the re, if if council was going to say absolutely not, we're not increasing these funds. There's no reason to invite this business that put all of this time and energy already into this application if we know that there's no way that council is going to approve this loan. So that's just, we're trying to spare the business the hassle of going through that after they've, you know, put their application together.
And and for just just um, Ms. Ms. Vasquez and myself are both on, you know, sit on that commission, you know, as a, to listen and see what they're up to. But it wasn't very much money. We, I think that when we came, when the commission came down to it, the, each one of these was only reduced by about five thousand dollars. Um, from what the original asking price was, that the original loan was asked for. So it wasn't like we were shortchanging them a great deal. It was, we were trying to stay within the budget that we had. And then with the idea that we could ask for some money from the abatement if necessary to make sure that we had enough to cover the last uh, applicant there. Um, they're all, all local businesses, they're all going to, you know, they're all worthy of the money that we can give them. But I think by, I think we should go ahead and approve this request from take the money from the abatement, put it into the revolving loan. Um, and in as much as some of these folks kind of need that loan to be working for them now, as opposed to waiting too much longer. And one of the, one of the applicants has been waiting since uh, we first announced uh, that we were going to be giving out these loans, you know, to eligible applicants. So to to do it, to keep delaying it, doesn't seem to be, it seems a little bit. Wrong to me.
Well, it it's ultimately up to council if, when we get to this in the meeting, if you guys decide you want to table it or or not. If you do table it, we can bring it back um, at the next one. So uh, whatever the direction of council is, we can, we can take care of that.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to go on the record and agree with Ms. Hart on this one. Let's just move forward on these and. All right, the next one, and this is one I really wanted to get to before we ran out of time. Item F, Adopting Powers of Initiative and Referendum, Approve a Resolution Declaring Intent to Enact Initiative and Referendum Powers. We did not get much time to talk about this in our last meeting and um, I know Ms. Frausto was wanting a vote on this one tonight. I don't know if I'm quite there yet, but Ms. Frausto, you go ahead and um, illuminate us just a little bit more than you were able to last time because we were so short of time.
Yeah, thanks. I'm glad that we got to this one um, with time because I actually wanted to, um, I don't know if we can do it now. Uh, but just having some individual conversations with with council members, um, I really feel like we need to get to a point where we fully understand how this is going to benefit our community. And I really want us all to get to that place. Now, it was my hope that I would bring more information today. We didn't get there, therefore I would actually love to table this. Item until the next time that we convene. Um, I was speaking with uh, Counselor um, Hart and I would love to maybe get some input. Um, if we believe even a workshop would be good for this, it could be a s- a s- a short workshop. Or the next time that we convene, we can, maybe I can bring up uh, some sort of presentation and uh, be able to explain this a little bit further with more of a breakdown to to you all during our session.
Well, I think that would be a brilliant idea because that was one of the questions that I had as I was um, contemplating some of these things over the weekend. I I'm not quite sure I understand what the benefit is that it brings to the community or what problem that we're solving by by doing this. And if I can understand that and if I get a better idea of it, then then I might be more enthusiastic about it. At this point, I I kind of feel like, you know, I don't have a horse in the race here. But um, I'd sure like to have a better understanding of of what your. But um I'd sure like to have a better understanding of of what your goal is in doing this.
Yeah, and I think that would require a more lengthy and in-depth conversation amongst us that we just do not have today.
Okay.
One, one of the things when I, when uh Counselor Vasquez and I were talking, we also talked about the possibility of creating a. Uh a subcommittee to just go over this and help do the research that's necessary. So we do have a solid picture when we go go to present it to council.
I think that's a brilliant idea. Do we, I mean, Ms. Frausto, obviously you're going to be part of the subcommittee. Do we have anybody else that would like to work on that subcommittee and help bring us a? A better understanding so that we can make a a more intelligent decision on this item?
Oh, but a.
I would like to.
Ms. Hart, okay.
Yeah, I I I would like to help with that.
Okay, and one other?
But Counselor Vasquez is at capacity. Uh Deputy Mayor, Counselor Ripley?
I would be willing to, except for the fact that during the next few weeks, I will be at capacity as well. There's just absolutely no way I'm gonna be able to add anything else, so. Because I would like to know more, but.
Can we, can we ask Mr. Beeler when is, if uh he would be interested?
We can do that. Um I will get in touch with him.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
If he doesn't take it, I'll.
Okay.
Squeeze her in.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so then we'd get ours three.
All right, so for, and then so there's no objection to this item being tabled, removed from the active agenda tonight and brought forward at a later date? Okay, no objection, this item is removed from our active agenda. Item G, we've got um maybe a little more than five minutes. Voting procedures, discuss a change in voting procedures. Mr. Gavon, I understand this is something that you want on the agenda for discussion only tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um are you okay with discussing it during the regular meeting? Bringing that up there?
Okay.
Okay, because I would like for everybody to have an opportunity to stand up, stretch, get a drink of water or whatever is necessary before we go into our regular meeting.
That's good.
All right, so if there's no objection, we are adjourned from our study session tonight at six nineteen.